Okay, let's do a roll call. Rebecca's here, Fran is here, Marie. Tony is not. Dion Matt is not. Frank is here, Jane's here, Susan, David, Savannah. I'm here. Emily is chasing dogs, her dogs just got out. So I understand that, you know. So she will be here, but. So Jeannie is here and Fred, okay.
No.
I know she's not here, but did you call her?
No, I didn't call anybody. Emily called me, that's how I know about Emily, but I don't call. Oh, I did call her name.
Oh, yeah, that's what I meant.
Oh, yeah, no, I did call her name. Okay. Any public comment? No, we have no, oh, no, we have no public here. Let's go ahead and approve the November fourteenth regular meeting minutes. I hope you all had a chance to look them over, I know I did. Did you see any corrections or omissions that you want to bring up? If I don't see it. Okay, a second? All right, all in favor? Aye, aye, opposed? Okay, minutes are approved. Is there anyone present that, you know, since we're starting our, we run for two years, so we're starting in 2024. Anyone want to be removed from the committee? Yay, okay, you're all in. That is really, really good. I will contact these people, maybe they're just absent or sick or whatever, but see how they feel. Okay, before the code enforcement subcommittee, you probably looked at this agenda and said, what is she thinking? You know, it's the teacher and me, I always overplan. And so I don't have any time at the end that lags. Let me just tell you what my thoughts are, and then I'm going to let you discuss it. So we're going to jump from five to seven and eight and go back to six, because I don't want to have to have you rushed in any way when you do code enforcement, okay? As a heads up, on January twenty-second, code enforcement, beautification, and noise will be presenting, okay? And I don't care what order you go in, you guys decide that, and you're on the agenda. Future downtown meeting dates, this is what I had in mind. Everyone has worked really hard and they've done great presenting. How would you feel about taking February off? And then in March, we introduce by the, all, I'm going to bring back all the items that we have left over and talk a little bit about each one of them, discuss it with you, and then let you go ahead and pick the five you want to work on next. And then I thought we would take April off, because in March, not only will you pick the topics we're going to do, but you're going to pick your teams that you're going to work on, and you're going to pick your chair of that team. And then, you know, I don't think we need to babysit you in April to say, come in, work on it, you know, together, I'd rather have you plan at your convenience. You know, when you're going to work on it. And then we reconvene again in May to say, how's it going? And get an update and answer any questions that you have. What do you think of that? Everyone's okay? Yes, yes, because now that you've gone through the process once, you know how it goes. So, all in favor? Oh, go ahead.
Will the topics that you revisit be available, or will it be open to discussion?
No, you could add more to it, because as, this is what's going to happen, you know, to our brainstorming list, is that as we see things coming up, we're going to want to add them to the list. And that's perfectly okay, because I know I'm going to add something about our two crumbling buildings downtown, and maybe code enforcement picks that up. But it needs to be a discussion on how quickly we want them to move on this. So anyway, if you are okay with the meeting dates, all in favor? Opposed? Then, then our next meeting will be officially the second Tuesday of March, okay? So mark that down, I will, I will go ahead and send something out also to you.
And then the second Tuesday of May?
And then the second Tuesday of May, okay? So March, May. All right. Let's go back to code enforcement. Yeah, go ahead.
So, thank you, everyone. I did not make copies, because I just waited for final sign off with my team members, and they have officially signed off, but I don't have copies, I'm just going to read this.
Oh, sure.
I'll share it with everybody. Carol, you've got a copy of it.
Yes, yes.
So the downtown code enforcement subcommittee is comprised of Susan Jacobson, Craig Johnson, Savannah Loebach, and myself. And we met recently about the January fourth. And thanks to some clarification from Carol, we reached that sub-progress, I would say, in terms of how to move forward, but we also have a lot of questions about what's the role of this committee. So I'm just going to read through what we captured in our notes. Teammates, feel free to jump in, anything else that we, that I did not list. But first of all, we wanted to identify who actually supervises the code enforcement team. Is it the community development department? Just confirming that. Two, is code enforcement complaint-driven? Or slash observation by staff or community? Question. Third, the code enforcement team enforces the following concerns on private property. And I listed what is actually on our website. And that includes abandoned and dangerous buildings, voided property, business license verification, land use zoning permits, illegal tree removal, seasonal outdoor sales, signs and advertisements, and unsafe living conditions. Does it also include homeless tents? Four, so what are the primary issues listed above that I just read that the downtown committee wants to focus on for code enforcement? Five, are monthly or quarterly reports from code enforcement provided to the council and general public to show what's been enforced, or what's being worked on? Six, does code enforcement continue as one of the top priorities at the downtown committee based on the new ordinances that were passed or under consideration, including street vendors, parking queue trucks, et cetera? Probably that would say, yes, it's still a priority, but we just asked that question. And then finally, what are the next steps, direction from the committee? So I think what we're really looking for is a couple of answers to questions about how is code enforcement actually occur? And then what does this downtown committee want us to focus on for code enforcement?
Well, the downtown. I would say not go citywide.
Okay, so all the, so would it be all the items that I listed?
Go through the list again, and we'll tell you yes or no.
Abandoned or dangerous buildings.
Yes.
Voided property maintenance concerns.
Yes, yes, I mean, there might be one, you know, that pops, yes.
Business license verification.
Yes, that could apply to the street vendors and stuff, correct?
That, yeah, that, yes, I guess it would, sure.
Proper licensing.
Land use and zoning permits.
I don't think that applies, because Jimmy, if they're down here, they have appropriate zoning permit, correct? Yeah, okay, so that one.
It could apply to permits that, like if someone has a permit to do something that's expired. I mean, I'm just saying that it can.
Oh, okay, for an empty building, right? Yeah.
Maybe permits would apply to the vendors also, correct?
Permits apply to anything that requires a permit. And I don't see how you're saying it doesn't affect downtown.
No, that's true, okay, yes.
Yeah.
But you really wouldn't have a business license open if you weren't feeling it was inappropriate appropriately, so.
People are supposed to have business licenses.
Yeah. I know, so it's, and they're supposed to have permits to do things, but yet people do step. That is not in compliance with their permit, or with an expired permit.
Right.
Well, when, when we had our our committee, the early work of the committee, what we did, we surveyed other cities as to what their top five code enforcement issues were, and then spoke to businesses downtown about what their top five issues were. And it was like cleanliness, landscaping, and the complaint-drivenness of the, of the department, right? And how folks, how to make it easier to report another business or not apply it, so. And lack of code enforcement, so. But I can share that data with you, I could email it to you.
Sure.
This is the work we did already.
Yes, because the list I read off is right on our website. That's where I got the list, the city's website. City website.
So we talked about fourteen or fifteen businesses and asked them what their top issues were. And that's what we gathered, and then compared it to our neighbor's.
So land use and zoning permits, yes? No?
I'm sorry, what?
Land use and zoning permits, yes?
Yes.
I think it's a yes.
Illegal tree removal. One of those city trees disappeared.
That's just a crime.
Because if it's gone.
Yeah, it doesn't.
Oh, you can find out who did it.
Is it that common? Do we want them spending that time on it?
Yeah.
It seems like a lower priority, but I do not want.
I don't.
I would say residential, they would not be much in downtown.
Okay. I'd say no, because it could, that could apply to anything, the stolen bench, the sto, I mean, you know.
Kind of random.
So seasonal outdoor sales. So that's when you've got the big flags up, it's Memorial Day weekend, and it's downtown.
Is that a code?
Well, wait.
Is that, you know, all enforcement issues?
Yeah, we actually have, we have some rules.
I don't think.
Yeah.
Twenty-five in Florida.
Yeah, there's, there's actually a lot of time to spend on something like that, very good.
I just remembered Jimmy's words, if everything's a priority, then nothing's a priority.
That's what I'm trying to clarify.
Yeah. Focus on, so, top three.
I mean, is that really going to stop people from coming downtown and, you know, like you said, unless you force rank them on there, you're not going to remove them.
I think, I think what, what I'm hearing is we're, we're trying to prioritize where we want code enforcement to focus first. Because we have rules for all, this is all people breaking the rules on all of these subjects. So the question is, in what order of priority are you saying, you know, we're going to dedicate more resources to correcting what people continue to ignore? And so I would put that below the ones we've already spoken of. Even though it's just as important, you know, it is important, they're all important, people should be following the rules.
And we have to figure out too, like, what's the role of the committee, right? Those are your first questions. Is it to highlight the things that are more needed, figure out solutions or workarounds? Or figure out is how businesses can influence code enforcement?
I'd say both, Rebecca, that's what we're trying to clarify, what exactly is our role? We understand what I'm asking, reading all the ordinances.
Define that list.
Yeah, right.
Or should there be two lists, or two sides where one that is more focused for downtown and one is for, you know, the residential, you know, one is for commercial and one's for residential.
I don't think we should get into residential.
Well, no. She said, this is on the website, so who posted this on the website? Who entered that into the website?
Yeah, so it's citywide.
So, yeah, so we're trying to.
We're trying to narrow it down.
Trying to funnel to downtown.
What is downtown committee like?
Well, making a recommendation to the city council, that's what this downtown committee is supposed to be doing, isn't it? Making a recommendation to the council. So what does the committee recommend that the council direct staff to do, knowing that we have to take things in a certain order?
The two proposed ordinances last night. You know, if they get passed, that would be a very high priority, because that would really change the face of downtown. So.
That would be nice having a bullet, if approved, then vacancy and climate would be, you know, at the bottom there, saying that would be added to the list. But also code enforcement goes to, I mean, if they're moving the creek, I mean, if there's homeless in the creek, you know, I mean, that's for the city, so that's why I'm saying, how do we focus for downtown and how do we focus for what is.
Well, what are the main issues of downtown? What are people concerned about? That's what we, maybe that helps with the brainstorming list.
Because if we can identify the top three or four.
Okay.
I mean, I think you have to have a reality check here.
Right.
Is that all going to get done, frankly?
No, no.
So what, what does this downtown committee?
Can I ask a question, Jane? Do you have to decide that today?
No.
Because I think it would be helpful if your committee would meet with Sharon and I. Because if you don't understand how code enforcement works, you can't really say what you should be focusing on. And a lot of people think they know what code enforcement does, but.
Jimmy, it was like you were in our meeting, because we said, you would like to really meet with city staff.
Well, I have ears everywhere.
Oh, hey.
I was, I heard.
There's ever, and then there's somebody in the chamber, oh, there's a machine.
Why don't we, maybe you can say, well, according to city staff, this isn't an area that we can really do much of, and you're not wasting your time.
Thank you. Is that okay with everybody?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, let's go back to the, and again, thank you for that, but let's go back to the unanswered questions that you may, may have. I mean, who supervises the team, right? Who, who's in charge of that? You know, are these complaint-driven or city-driven? You know, I would say they're complaint-driven. If I'm wrong, correct if I'm wrong, and then also, you know, should we be getting a monthly code enforcement report? I agree, I think we should, right? So those are questions that we need to get answered.
That's what we asked the questions for, yeah. So maybe all that, Jimmy, we can cover these questions? Does that make sense?
Well, I think code enforcement is both complaint-driven and not, because I got a letter from Scott Baron about the whole smoking, which didn't apply to our building, but here he was, you know, that was sent to us and I contacted him, and he was saying that they was getting tons of calls, because a lot of the mailing went, it wasn't accurately, I guess.
It wasn't residential.
It wasn't even a residential property. And it was blanketed, so they were getting a lot of calls of, hey, does this apply to me? And then it was like, no, it doesn't. So a lot of his time was spent on reinforcing, I'm assuming that was Zach Hilton's thing, so, I mean.
No, 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 no. That was a new ordinance that council had approved, and according to the ordinance, we had to notify all the residential properties.
Well, and this was seventy-five oh-one commercial downtown.
Yeah, it obviously should not have went there, but it wasn't as Zach Hilton.
Well, no, I was saying, because smoking and when they had a discussion at city council about residential and having that, so.
And so anytime you pass a new ordinance, you have to publicize that, that's the proactive part.
So that's another part that, Jane, that code enforcement has to do, is not just complaint-driven.
Yeah, we get there's a lot on the plate. And I think you have to do reality checks with two code enforcement officers, hopefully now a third getting hired.
Exactly.
Right.
So, Carol, would you agree then that maybe code enforcement could be pushed back after January?
I think so.
Because we really would like the time that could be with Jimmy and Sharon.
Right. Now, the committee, I think, would like to hear the final report, so if we, it's okay with me, you know, to push you back, but then you would present to the committee at the March meeting, is that okay with you? Because, all right, and then we hear you, and then we, and then give input. And then you present at a March city council meeting, which would probably be the second one in March, is that okay with you? Yeah, okay, yeah, that's fine with me. How does the group feel? Is that okay?
No, yes, I'll tie up for you here.
Uh huh.
Thank you.
All right.
Anything else?
And I'll show, I'll send that information to you, so you don't have to ream at the wheel.
Jimmy, we'll send the computer dates over, you could send me dates.
Sure.
Sounds good, my people is me.
Okay, are there any other comments about, see, this is when overplanning works, because now we've got a lot of time. But this is okay, though. Um, any other comments? You know, about, or questions or input that you'd like to give code enforcement?
I have a question, that the new park downtown kind of changed the face of downtown a bit, where if a parent vagrant is hanging out on the street, but now we have a park downtown. And I'm sure there's rules already in place, but I've been by there a couple of times, and there's adults hanging out in that park that I wouldn't feel comfortable bringing kids to. So is that a code enforcement issue, or is that a case-by-case basis where somebody just has to report something if they don't feel comfortable?
Now, see, that's going to be tricky, because if they're not breaking the law, they have a right to be in the park. But then, were they just hanging out, or, I mean, I understand what you're saying, you know.
It's actually, it's pretty common in downtown, so there's three, there's three parks that are within walking, you know, between, there's like forest, and then there's church. And there's three parks in that area, and we run a summer camp and we go to the parks, and I've had a lot of camp leaders say, you know, we weren't comfortable going to this park, because there were several either older kids who were not using, you know, they were hanging out on the playground, but they're like just talking or whatever, and then there's, you know, and so it's pretty common for that to happen, it's not just in this one park. I don't think it helps that there's not, I think that park in particular is going to get more of that, because I don't know who decided what's in the pop-up park, but my kids are confused by it, and they're like prime park age. They're, they're confused by the park, they, there's nothing to play with for them. And I think what you're saying is going to be more and more common because of that, because kids aren't going to be attracted to it as much. And if there's a lot of kids going over there, then people are less likely to loiter, and so I don't know if there's like a loitering rule in downtown parks, that might be something.
I mean, is it loitering if you're at a park? Just going to hang out in a park?
Well, yes, but there's, I mean, from our experience with running the summer camp, people are not doing things they're supposed to be doing. There's alcohol and there's drugs, you know, there's at least marijuana, you know, which they're not of age, you can tell they're teenagers.
But even of age, marijuana is not legal out in public.
Right, I don't.
Period of age, okay, because I'm encountering that in a lot of places downtown, including in some of the brewery establishments.
And I think that is considered loitering, is when, you know, and I think it would help if the downtown park was actually a useful park for kids.
Well, you can't drink or smoke in the park.
But they do it, you know, and that's hard, you know.
It's hard to prove it and all that stuff, but the more kids are attracted to that space, the more like, less likely there are going to be people hanging out there, either A, just to hang out, or B, doing illegal things, so maybe reconsidering what's in that park.
Well, no, that's part of our downtown beautification report.
That'd be great.
Exactly what you said, I agree with you, it's confusing. But again, how can we set it up where, you know, I mean, it's spread people from.
I think too, in our conversations, to make it a park that you led, Fred, it wasn't necessarily just for kids, right? Or kid-centered park, it was for downtown patrons and, and just to provide something kind of different in our downtown.
Right, but it wasn't for loitering either, you know, I, I understand what you're saying. You know, if there's, if it makes you.
It's about sleeping in parks, right? There's people, it's like, it's living in parks, but it's a park, so you can hang out, and we don't have a time limit on that, except for overnight.
But I think what she's talking about is sometimes we go someplace, if your stomach kind of clutches, you know, like, I don't feel really good, I don't feel safe with this person. By the way, he's looking, by the way, he's sitting on a bench, as, by the way, you know, he, his eyes are following you as you're going. That's a little different than just going there and sitting, and just talking, or just, just.
If your presence makes somebody else uncomfortable, that's, that's on them, I mean, I think, you know, if somebody's not committing a crime towards you, or menacing you, you know, I mean, what in particular bothers you about somebody's presence? If you're doing something illegal, then that's illegal.
I know, Susan, we're going to get to you. Yeah, all right.
I have a couple of comments.
Yeah, go ahead.
I know in a lot of our parks, there's a sign that says, no alcohol, blah, blah, blah. I don't think there's a sign there, is there yet? The other thing I want to say is we're encouraging businesses to come downtown. Now, right next door to that park is going to be an ice cream sweet shop. Who likes to visit those places?
Yeah, children.
I think the owner said she may have to close a couple of hours early in the winter, just because there is an element.
So if we're talking.
Come in downtown, open your business, but, you know, good luck. We're going to leave you hanging.
Right, I mean, if she's starting to feel unsafe, Frank has seen people loitering, and we don't have, I mean, cornhole. There's nothing to throw into the cornhole, so that doesn't allow the kids to play, and the xylophone already has broken keys, because I played it the other day. You know, we have to think of more things for kids, because you're right, we want to attract families and kids down there. And then a certain element that shouldn't be there will not be there. Because it's a shame if Savannah feels like she has to close early, because she doesn't feel safe.
I will say, though, so when we moved in, you know, Tony and I moved in, and then, and Patilla's was already closed, and there was a lot of, there was a lot of unhoused activity there. We had people sleeping on our front porch and everything. However, once we moved in, we would call, it, it lessened a lot. So there's a lot less, because the neon is there, you know, and now when Savannah comes in, there'll be less, it'll be more activity, and it will cause people less, less of the other activity that, you know, is not as safe. But the problem too is the Gilroy Arts Alliance, they don't, they're not active. They're, you know, they're open a couple of times. That is a problem, and that's what's going to cause, because no one is there to report people sleeping on the sidewalks, because they're only there a couple of hours a week or whatnot. So my suggestion for that would be to really push the city or whoever, then the arts alliance, to really activate that space and get more things happening. And I've, you know, I have tried to partner with them and everything, they want to keep everything in-house. So whatever needs to happen in that way, that is going to really, really help push the activity that we don't want out of that area.
Do you have plans and stuff for it, for winter or summer break, for your kids' camps and things?
Every break we have camp, but we don't go there. We don't go there because there's no fence, so runners, you know, kids, they like to run. We used to go to the library, because we have, we go to the library on Thursday, one of the afternoons. We used to go to the library park, but there's a lot of, there are a lot of teenagers who hang out on the play structures. And so now we go to Forest Park, which is better, it's not, it's not as clean, but the leaders just pick up trash. So we go, every break, we always go to the parks around here. So that's just another suggestion for.
So hopefully beautification, Fred, maybe can discuss some of these ideas and add to it, or?
I think that was one of the recommendations, Fred, that we had, was putting a fence around the park.
So it doesn't sound like it's an issue for code enforcement, but it's something that, I guess we're talking about.
We do have loitering laws, so.
These are all things I said in very genuine, so yeah, I'm with you guys, so, yeah, we got that.
Was your question answered, Susan?
Not really.
Well, there's no sign down there.
You're right, I don't think there's a sign, no, so how do you enforce when, I didn't know that.
So is that something we should just have done already, Jimmy? When you open any kind of park, put a sign that says, you can't, there can't be alcohol, there can't be drugs, et cetera?
You can do that, sure.
Is that not a policy when we open a park?
It's not really a law.
It's not really a park.
Yeah, well, no, but I think, I think for the time being, it is.
Because it's not part of the city's park.
But if we have that attitude about it's something apart, then we don't, it's like, we don't care about it.
I mean, it has to be a park, right?
So it just means we have to make the sign.
Park for that.
It's not so.
And it's a pop-up, yeah.
What you, what you have to understand about a pop-up park is a commercial property that is being temporarily used as a park, so it's not considered an actual park. So we would have to go through and figure out if we can even do actual park things to it, because it's not zoned for a park. That's why it's called a pop-up park.
And it's, so it's a commercial, it's city commercial park?
It's, yes.
But in Morgan Hill, though, their pop-up park, until they built the building there, they had a piano, they had the big chairs, they, I mean, it was definitely a kid's zone. When you walked by, you knew. But we need to make this a kid's zone, I mean, if we don't, because right now it's not a kid's zone.
Right, I think, from what I keep hearing, I think there's a different vision of what we want and what the city wants for that park.
I think so.
And that's frustrating part, because nobody's going to go down there because of what we're hearing. And you just mentioned Morgan Hill, you're absolutely right. They made it interactive, they put things out there, that the city took ownership, and that's why people are going there. Now, if we have an attitude as much as not a sign of a park, then, you know, why?
Then why even have it?
No, the attitude is that it is not technically a park. You cannot make it a park.
I don't think there's, yeah, I, I don't, with all respect, I don't think there's a difference between what the city wants, I mean, and the city council is the city. So when it gets to us with whatever the recommendation is going to be, that's when, you know, that's when we decide. But right now, Jimmy's correct, it's not zoned as a park, so you can call it whatever you want. But right now, it is a temporary thing that we are trying to figure out how, how to make it be useful and safe, and that will come to beautification.
And if we want the kind of investment, we want it to look like the Morgan Hill pop-up park, then we have to throw money at it and add more amenities to it, right?
Which I thought we had that.
In all fairness to Jimmy, we told him to buy some stuff, we didn't give him specifics, right?
And I thought that's the discussion we had when we first brought this forward, right? That were, these are the ideas, this is what we wanted, but we never had a.
We didn't say specifically, we want a giant chair, we want.
Because you have to have a council majority that says it.
And we need.
And the budget for it, yeah.
Is that something we can do here, is have it as like a subcommittee to boost up that park within the limits of it not technically being a park? Is that something that we can do in this?
That's a beautification, so we.
There's just a lot in your beautification, that's why I was thinking, maybe we could like pull it out, so we have maybe people who, you know, are focusing just on that space, because I'm hearing that it has a lot of, you know, Susan's brought up an issue with it, and then like I brought up an issue with, and so it's like separate things. So I'm wondering if that's something this committee could do, is come up with, make it a zone committee.
Yeah, Frank, I mean Frank, Fred, it's totally up to you.
Yeah, no, I mean, I, what I would suggest is, because we've already worked on the presentation for that, but I would suggest you guys send us, because again, I've come fifty notes of all this, obviously, and then we can incorporate that, and then at a report, if it's something we're seeing, you know, we need an additional time, and by all means, I agree with you.
Oh, okay.
I, again, I'm going to go with, I understand it's not a park, but it's an attraction that we can make.
And I think in all reality, a pop-up, this pop-up park's going to be around for a while, because what, what else would it be used for? I don't see the arts and cultural center expanding anytime soon, probably, you know, five plus years, you know.
Yeah, unless Dave decides to buy it. Yeah, unless Dave decides to buy it.
Well, okay, alright.
To make its own park.
Does the city own that parcel?
Yes, yeah, and the city owns the arts building too, and so, your point, Emily, about the Arts Alliance, who the city leases that building to, um, does need to be held accountable for, just like any business owner would be, and so, um, that's on us as a city, to make sure that what they're supposed to be doing in accordance with their lease, to be able to have this building for a whopping dollar, you know, is actually adhered to.
Emily, I want just one final comment, and thank you Rebecca, just Rebecca's absolutely right, the recommendations that we're going to make, obviously, there are some that, that we don't have the funding for the city to do, for example, right, so that's where the P-bid or something else has to come into play, but things like that, you know, um, the pop-up park, or the lighting, this fence, whatever it may be, those are things that we as a council have to decide, do we want to invest in that, right? And that's where, at the next meeting, that's where we'll have a better sense of where this council stands, but yeah, I agree with you on those.
Alright, anything else, Jane?
I think we have direction.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you.
And we have time, so what we're going to do is, let's kind of do a recap of last night, um, did any of you watch it? You know, on, I, Frank was there, I know Jane was there, but anyone else? I want to thank everyone who presented.
Yeah, good job.
David and Jeannie.
Yeah, good job on the presentations.
Yeah, very, very, Emily, yeah, you guys did a great job in presenting, Jane?
I was really, uh, very, very pleased with the whole process, and Carol, I thought you laid it out nicely, Dionne as well, and I thought your presentations, you know what was so encouraging about it? It was so real, you know, you were speaking as a property owner, you were talking about the, the realities of what that's like, and why you can recommend certain things, not just for your own perspective, but as a broader picture, but your own personal story was important, and it was a conversation. I think those were so healthy, so I really appreciated that.
Great, and I, and I really did like when David shared all that, because no one could come up and say, well, that's impossible to do, that's just too expensive to do. You know, it's like, no, you know, he did it, and he did it within the timeframe, and we didn't even have to ask him, he just did it on his own, and he came to us one day, he goes, I hired Cheryl and painted a mural, and it's like, okay, we got to see how this would actually work, and we just have so many artists in town that would welcome, you know, painting on plywood, something, it, it's, no one can actually say no.
And if that's about their cup of tea, right, you also provided other examples of ways.
Right.
Right, right.
It's a plywood and window dressing, uh, displays as well, so that's where it's a combination, and plywood got added to it, so like, Dave gave an example of the psycho donuts, where, you know, you can put advertising up in your window, you know.
Because it works.
Not everything is as huge as Gilroy Bowl.
I mean, highlight the fact that as long as you just try, right?
Exactly, just try, you know.
Just put some effort into it, show that you care.
And you know, we have to make sure that they understand, you know, it's current, like, you know, La Frontera needs to be down from the hall building, you know, the Chris, the window next door needs to be washed at Christmas, you know, I just don't want the business owners to say, okay, I decorate my window. If it's seasonal, you have to take care of it, you just don't let it stay forever.
Christmas decorations up till, you know, Easter, right?
Yeah, you know, so, you know, well, let's, let's hope.
Some of us don't want to let it go.
I didn't mention who, I wanted to mention you, but.
So Jimmy, in reality, when do you think, you know, these ordinances will come back? Because I always, I always hate to hear, well, we have to take something else off the, you know, the plate, it's like, no, 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 we all work in, you know, we've all worked, and we're, work came onto us, and we just have to keep marching ahead and, and getting it done, you know, because most of it's already written, you know, for, for whoever writes it.
We'll come back to council and march and discuss the community development work plan, because there is things that are going to take longer, you know, if we hop these to the front.
Right.
That's just reality.
But you know, I, I don't want to see the, the items that the downtown committee works on, get passed off for a year, a year and a half, because it loses all importance. Um, I mean, in my mind, I liked seeing this done, you know, five months ago, you know, where we got on, we said, we have a, an issue, we have to address it, let's get going, because every business that we lose out on is lost money for the city, and we're trying really hard, you know, to get the economic development down, downtown going, and it's important to have good-looking windows and businesses, because I listen to people talk, and they'll say, oh yeah, I was talking to so-and-so, you know, he walked downtown, he looked at the empty buildings, and he's afraid, he just doesn't want to come down, he doesn't think it's going to work. But yeah, when people go buy psycho donuts, it's, it's hopeful, it's inspiring, you know, say, hey, they're coming, well, if they're coming, I think I'm going to come too, because we can do it, so these two ordinances, proposed ordinances, really should be on the books no later than May, really should, because summer is coming, if not, if not sooner, because we've got to get things going.
Okay, I, I agree with you, I made this very strong point, I think it's the two ordinances, but sort of what, what else the other committees have.
Oh, yeah, no, Chris.
Because you mentioned something, and I understand that there's a lot on our agendas, but I also see like, last night, we had lightage, right? So if there's things that we could put on, and again, I'm just saying, not every agenda is going to be fully packed, so there has to be time for us to find these and put them on sooner than later, because I agree.
Well, I think it's the writing, it's the preparing, it's the legal, you know, going over with the legality, there's a lot of other things that tie into it, but, yes.
So because I have to go get to another meeting, I'm going to leave, but I think this kind of discussion on timing really is for the council, not in here, and not trying to, Jimmy is going to do whatever the council directs, and so it's on him to bring to us what the whole work plan is, like he said he's going to do, and then it's for the council to say, this needs to come before this, and this needs to come before that, okay?
Okay.
Alright, so thanks everybody.
Alright, have a good meeting.
Oh.
Derek, go into your.
Yes. Okay.
Dionne, like I asked last night, I just kind of wanted clarification, um, when you shared that it would be a citywide, you know, you're willing to have it as a citywide thing. Then I don't know how far code enforcement, because then that brings the outlets into vacancies, you know.
Well, I think we have to have a discussion as a council, if we're going to do it citywide, because I know I personally am concerned that we started as downtown, and all of a sudden, a residential property owner is going to sit there and say, whoa, my vacant house now is going to be subject to all these fines and penalties, and you know, and I, I think we're overstepping a little bit, I mean, I understand where you're coming from, because it's not good to have abandoned properties, but code enforcement should take over on its own, when you get to the residential area, and, you know, because they have all the rules that they have, they have, that they're going to, um, that they have jurisdiction.
What about businesses on Tenth Street, First Street?
Well, but see, our downtown is between First and Tenth, our focus.
The focus was downtown.
Energy into downtown, it's around eight percent of the total business.
No, that's true.
But that's, I mean, that's why that, that was formulated here at this committee, this committee specifically for downtown.
See, that's it.
If you want to expand it and take that to the ballot, it's a whole other battle.
Yeah. Right, right.
Huge other.
And, and I agree with you though, you know.
And a decision to be made at council, not here.
Right, and I, and I think, once success is seen in the downtown, everyone's going to jump on the bandwagon for First and Tenth, because I don't see, you know, actually, I think First and Tenth looks a lot better than, you know, a lot of places downtown, but it could be a success story, and it all will follow where other people jump on the bandwagon, but I think if we start stretching out to First, Tenth, um, First Street, Tenth Street, and everything in between First and Tenth, it's just going to be overwhelming, and.
So what are?
We are.
We're, we're between, all the businesses between First and Tenth, as well. And Railroad to Eagleberry.
I think that was my, so when I was talking to Fred about having too much on the beautification, I think my biggest concern is when you, when you put something together, and then you try to pass it by city council, or even on the ballot, if there's so much, and someone doesn't agree with one part of it, it's going to go, it's going to get kicked.
Right.
So that's why I'm wondering if maybe, you know, it would be good to kind of pare some of these down, and then like you said, you know, for this, for the vacancy, because I could tell when I was giving that presentation, when people were like, whoa, like, that's, you know, that's kind of a lot to swallow, and if we tried to do that with the remainder of the city, or if we put too much in one of our ordinances, or, you know, then it.
But not all of them have to go to the ballot, but just that one in particular.
Right, but if we put something towards, if we put something for you guys to vote on at city council, and like, let's say that Fred's team takes beautification, and there's a lot in there, and someone, and someone's like, well, I don't agree with the middle part of it, then it, the whole thing goes, right? Because you guys don't.
Not this part, not this part.
Because we, we negotiate it, right, on the ballot, and you, you will.
So Emily, no, Emily, if you point out, I'll kind of share a little bit, Fred, I will share a little bit with you, is the recommendations we have, we have it kind of split up, right? There are things that we, we know that the city can do, lighting, this and that, but then there are other things, for example, the arch, or whatever it may be. A lot of that will come if the P-bid is successful, right, so it's not all, where do we find the money from the city, because we know we don't have.
So it's kind of each, which, each ordinance or each recommendation is going to be, so this one for ours, vacancy, if, it would go to the ballot, and so if it's citywide, it would be harder to pass, and if it's just downtown type of thing.
Now, keep in mind, the only part that's going to the ballot, I, I understand, is just where to put that, that fine. Either on the tax bill, or you do it like the city does, with a lien, but if, if the council approves everything about, yes, we want this fine done, yes, we want this done, that, that part does not go to the ballot.
So if it goes to city council.
On the ballot if it's a property type.
Right, right.
And so, right, and so if it goes to city council, and you get, and we have it at citywide, and city council will say, well, no, we want it to be, will you guys say, like, we prefer it to be downtown? Is that part of your negotiations? Oh, I don't know, this is mine, I don't give a.
No, no, those are good questions.
Well, that's what we defined when we first started this, this subcommittee, was, it was defined as downtown.
Right, First and Tenth, yeah.
First and Tenth, and then Railroad and Eagleberry, just to start off small, and then if some of these things do branch, like, De, you know, Dionne's looking big picture, then you know, maybe then things apply to the rest of the city or parts.
Well, if, if we did it, say, just as a downtown, the, this would never pass if you took it to voters, because you're asking them to find them salaries. But it's a city.
Well, that's necessarily true, I could see, you know, when I lived in Gilroy, we had, I had vacant, there were vacant houses that were totally run down there, I mean, I would have voted for this. So I don't, I think the majority of people, especially people who are coming into Gilroy, they're not going to want vacant houses.
But if it doesn't pass on the ballot, what you wrote up as, as a proposed ordinance could still stand if you did it as a lien, correct?
Right, it just might not be as.
Without, all you're asking is.
Yeah, that's what we always do.
Right, right.
It might be two different ballot measures, right, because residential and, and commercial are, are different in terms of tax code, right?
Right, but again, I just don't see us getting involved in residential.
I think it's way too broad, way too broad to the residential, and code enforcement, like, you can, your home could be vacant, as long as it's up to code.
Yeah, see.
And not lighted.
Yeah, I.
You already have rules and policies around that.
I think we're overstepping, going into residential, I think we need to stay with our parameters.
Commercial, yes, there's citywide, commercial, I think is fine, but not, that's a, that's a.
Yeah.
And then Emily.
So we have.
Wait a second.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
I just wanted, what is the criteria for the exemption, or I guess it's code enforcement, or who is overseeing that? Um, every hundred and eighty days, is that that's the monitoring team, or code enforcement?
Right.
And what, how do they determine that the owner is actively seeking somebody to rent their building? What is the criteria?
I mean, you, so, from a standpoint of someone who's done a lot of, I mean, I've been renting, leasing properties for, as long as I've been, we've been in the military, so thirteen years, and you, you have to have an add-up to lease or something, so proof, if you want an extension, that's why we have the extension for the permit, or for the exemption. So let's say, let's take my building, so I, I recently leased the Patel Building, right, and, uh, they.
Patel is which building?
Uh, the two, they're now they're white, um, the, in between Overflow and Settled Down.
Okay, got it.
They haven't had a sign for leasing, no one has, like, the only reason I found out about that building is because my friend was doing work for them. Otherwise, I had no idea, like, that it was even for lease, so they had no, no leasing sign up, they had nothing online, there was no physical evidence that they were actually attempting to lease the building. Um, there's another building, seven before eleven in downtown, I have tried to rent that building through, two or three separate times over the space of four years, and they've never had, uh, they've had a one add-up one time, but if you call and ask if it's for rent, they say, no, we have plans for it. That is not actively leasing.
That, yeah, she's right, she's absolutely correct.
They have, there's a building with the desserts on the front of it, the five.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
That's it.
I went to go see if we can rent that space, oh, no, no, we have a, we have a tenant.
And they do not have a tenant.
They do not have a tenant, they actually, their lease was expired, their permits were expired, the architect had been working on it for three years. They don't have an ad in the newspaper, or wherever, or Loop Net to release it, any of that, and so I went there asking about it, and then three weeks later, I hear that the potential, the potential tenant they had backed out, and they've been a potential tenant for two years.
So, and, and I appreciate giving those examples, but if, how is that going to be monitored, that you guys are saying, and criteria, especially if it's a building that doesn't need, it doesn't have any permits, it's a full functioning place, there was a business in there, they've recently moved out, they, they did, they,
They have to show proof.
Just so they show proof that, like, if someone's unemployed, you're, hey, I'm actively looking, I mean.
You have a, you can take a picture of the for-lease sign in the window, you can screenshot.
So that, that's what I'm saying, that's a criteria, as small as that is what you're saying would be enough.
You just have to show some proof that you're attempting.
And so every hundred and eighty days, somebody is.
Well, okay, but we have another building that has a huge for-lease sign on it, and he's not actively leasing it, because this building owner has attached a lot of improvements that he should be doing, but he wants the person who leases the building to do it. So no one is taking him up on that, because it's going to take a chunk of their money out.
That's why the code, if it's not up to code, that's why we have the code, as the city comes in.
Oh, that, you're right, that's how he would get dinged.
It's not use, uh, so I know, there are certain things you have to have for code, up to code, for you, your use, but when you walk into a building, there's some buildings that, no matter what you're doing with that building, it's not to code, and they want you to fix it, like Sammy Woo's building. That building is not up to code, no matter what you're doing, and he doesn't want to pay for it.
I'm asking of a building that is up to code.
Yeah, and so then you have.
You know, every hundred and eighty days, who's checking, or who's monitoring?
They have to get that extension, otherwise they get fined.
I wonder how, um, labor-intensive that's going to be for our code enforcement state.
Well, that's what I'm saying, but that's what I'm saying.
And how much of it is subjective, you know, like, how?
Carol, going back to Jane's, again, this is our break, but going back to Jane's question about how, you know, things are going to be enforced, and this. Does this committee have a copy of the information, because I know there's one out there, of all the vacant, current vacant buildings? It'd be nice for us to have that list, because I think it's going to help them with that, right?
Right.
I, I asked for it, I was referred to the Chambers website, that's not what I'm looking for.
I have it between Fourth and Seventh.
Okay, well, we're first.
But First and Tenth, I do not.
So I think what we, as a committee, we need to get that list, updating list, to the entire committee, sooner than later.
To see how many, yeah, how many. And. Right.
Because I may go back to him and say it one last time, and I appreciate you saying this, we can't just sit and wait for the city to throw us on the agenda.
Right.
We have to move quickly.
We have to be proactive, and what Emily is sharing with you is absolutely true, when I did that, the Small Business Interviews, the number of unleased buildings is horrific downtown, it's, it's thirty-three percent of our downtown between Fourth and Seventh is vacant, and they will not lease a building, it's the same group, and.
Mostly, but do they have signs up?
What?
No, I would, how would they?
Some have signs up.
How would they evade this new, um, ordinance? Like, I think we have to, I think you've got to put some thought into it, right?
Yeah, it's, it's going, it's going to be difficult, because they're going to lie about it.
With just a sign up, right.
They're going to lie about it, they're going to say, um, we have, we have a tenant, we have someone coming in, and then this is where code enforcement has to get really strict and say, well, then we, yeah, show us the lease.
Show us the lease.
And we need to see action here, but Emily's right, some of them are not up to code, so that's going to be really easy for code enforcement to go in and say, how can you lease this building when it's not up to code right now, so when are you going to start the process, when are you going to start working? And, and I find really disturbing is that, Dave knows this, he's offered to buy a couple of them, we've had people that have gone to these pe, these owners and said, we'd like to buy your building, no. So this is why the vacancy ordinance came about, is because they are crippling our downtown. They're not letting other, and because they have had people wanting to buy the buildings, and it's always no.
So do we have measures in place that are enforceable, that are, that are measurable, right, that, and fair-handed, right?
Mm-hmm.
Um, that our, our code enforcement officers can.
I think, I think Dionne's group, Dionne needs to answer that one, but. I think, I think Dionne's group, Dionne needs to answer that one, but I, I think you have put it in. You know, they, they've done days, so code enforcement needs, let's say that, you know, Emily owns a building and code enforcement knows that it's empty. You know, they could come in after certain, whatever you wrote down, you know, 90 days or whatever, and say, "May we look at your building to see if it's up to code?"
So that's why we, so Fred brought up a good point, he's like, "Do we have a list?" We don't have a list. But with this ordinance, they have to register. So then you have a list, and once they register, then that's when the city comes in. And that's why we have fines attached because obviously, we're already shorthanded with code enforcement. So this pays, hopefully, for itself, the program, the ordinance. They come in, say, "Okay, like, there's a building in downtown that's, doesn't have a sign on it, but they're trying to lease it. It doesn't have a bathroom. No bathroom at all. Not ADA, no plumbing, none of it." And they'll come in and be like, "Where's your bathroom?" And that's, and then if they don't get an active permit to complete that bathroom, then they are subject to the $6,000 vacant. I mean, they can have a vacant building all day long, they just have to pay for it. And then, you know, it's like, okay, this other building is vacant, city goes in there, "Oh, it looks like you've had people living in the back of this building, you know, and so you need to secure it and clean it out and blah, blah, blah." And that's, and you can always, you know, have, when staff writes up, they can say, "We need to show proof of a lease, we need to show proof of active leasing attempts or whatever you want."
So we should add code enforcement, like, we had to add that code enforcement to our actual ordinance. So it's code enforcement that's going to actually be doing all...
You know, it's going to be very busy for code enforcement.
Or is it something else? I'm just asking.
No, it's going to be code enforcement. It's going to, it's going to be very busy for them for the six to eight months because things have been so neglected.
Right.
And, you know, they say, "Well, why don't we look like Morgan Hill?" These other cities, we're not kidding when we said cities laughed at us when we were talking about plywood removal and the vacancies. Because they don't have that problem. Why don't they have that problem?
Because they're proactive.
They're on, they're proactive, they're on top of it. So yeah, the first year might be really rough. But you know what? After that, you start to gain respect from businesses coming in to say, "Oh, we can't mess around with Gilroy. We're going to be honest, if we just come in and buy our property and sit on it or allow people to live in it, and we don't care." We want to be known as a city who cares, to get things turned around. So everyone's doing well down here with businesses. And if, and so, is it going to be tough? Yeah. Do I care if code enforcement's going to be really running to the ground on this? No, because this is something they should have been doing all along. Because we found out Gilroy does have the ordinances protecting all of this, and they're not being addressed. And, you know, enough's enough. It's like we're drawing a line in the sand. When we started this downtown committee, I did not intend for two years that we were going to sit here and just talk and talk and talk. And I'm really proud of you guys because you guys tackled five really tough items. And we got our teeth into it, and we're not going to give up on this. And, because I don't know about you, but sometimes I sit on a committee and we just talk, we just talk, we do nothing. And it's horrible. It's like, no. And when I say to you, "I wish we were done four months earlier," I mean it. It's like, come on, folks, let's get going. Because we've got some hefty things. And in seven minutes, I'm going to share some of these with you, so you're thinking about our upcoming conversation come March. Crime and safety downtown, do you feel that's still really important, that needs to have a subcommittee? Yes, okay. Parking, I'm going to take off because we have the parking report, is that okay?
The city's handling it.
The city is handling it.
We have no problem with parking.
Well, yeah. Okay.
It's like $200,000 told us.
Yeah, Dionne's right. Another one, attract, attracting, attracting businesses to Gilroy. You might want to talk about that. We've got Victoria sitting here with us, who's doing, who's working on that, and the Chambers working on it.
We have contracted the retail coach for this year.
Good.
That is helping us with that, that we would be working with Victoria on.
Okay, good.
It's all about the recruitment.
So, so what do you think? Do you want to drop that as a subcommittee?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're talking about vacancies, right?
Do I see all little heads nodding, thumbs up, you know?
I think Jane made a good point on that one specifically yourself, but my, my question or concern is, you know, and Carol, you're absolutely right in saying that, you know, we're in a different time now, right?
Right.
What worked, possibly worked in the past, probably doesn't work now.
Right.
And I think for that, we have to, what did we do that's not working? How do we, how do we make it better, right?
For what, attracting businesses or what? I don't think we did much of much.
No, 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 I'm saying...
Before, but yeah, but now we have some. So do, can I cross this off? Attracting, attracting businesses to Gilroy.
I feel we want to, need to keep...
Keep it on?
Oh, keep it on?
Yeah.
Okay, and then maybe work with them, okay. Jane might want to be part of that subcommittee.
Go side by side with the vacancies, right?
Jane?
Well, true.
And like, is permit assistance a different one on there?
Which one?
Permit assistance, like...
Oh, yes, the handbook. That, that's, that you, that was yours that you brought up. Let me go down and order Parklets. We're addressing it? Can we...
That's on the council.
That's on the council.
Right, so I'm going to cross that off. This is yours, Emily. New Business Support Handbook.
Or advocacy.
Is that permit assistance?
Permit assistance would be part. Because when Emily suggested this, she was saying, "It's really hard for someone brand new coming to Gilroy to know the steps."
Couldn't that go into the attracting new businesses, though, kind of as a...
Yeah, it's economic development.
Yeah.
So it is, but I, and I didn't use the term handbook, I used the term advocacy because this, this comes into the whole issue, you know, with vacancy too. But it's, it's not just knowing what to do. It's also coming to the city and saying, like, you know, "I'm trying to open this business, but I'm getting three different answers. My building owner wants me to pay for X, Y, and Z. And it needs to be some sort of advocacy for new businesses," which does tie into economic development because it'll help businesses come in. But unless you're developing, unless there's something within the program that you guys are working on that advocates for new businesses that are specifically tenants, I don't think it addresses it quite because, I mean, it's a crime what's happening.
We're running out of time, so I'm going to interrupt you right there. What do you want to do with this subcommittee? Do you want it to go with economic develop, attracting businesses to Gilroy? Do you want to keep it separate?
I think it's separate.
It's separate.
I do, too.
It's a whole other, you know.
Okay. And then we can talk more about it in March, you know, what you need to do because community development might already have something written up. But I see what Emily's saying, you want it short, concise, and not pages and pages that you're reading.
Carol, like, I'd like us to revisit the facade improvement program.
Good, was that what you wanted to add? Because I was just going to ask you, what did you want to add to this list?
No.
Facade improvement.
It's the grant money, right?
Yeah, facade.
Thank you. That's why we need to revisit that.
I love the honesty, it's awesome.
I missed that, what did you say, Emily?
That it's impossible to use.
Yeah, yeah.
Because it was easy.
No, no, that's good.
It, it was easy when I first moved into downtown. That was an easy process, but then I guess it's changed to...
Okay, that's a good one. Okay, increased downtown events. That was one suggestion you had. Do you want to get rid of that one? I mean, that's Downtown Business Association. All right.